After posting a notification of press in accordance with Wisconsin 1934. And first thing is our post message, safety message. Does everybody have one? Share? No, well, I do. And I'm a motorcyclist. And I would, you know, not only for the motorcyclist's safety.
All right. For the safe purposes of safety for the motorcyclists, wearing the appropriate gear and that kind of thing, but also just for other motorists, making sure you're paying really close attention to people out there because, not just the bicycle, I mean, the inundation of all those, but, but motorcyclists as well.
I appreciate you saying that because my son is a motorcyclist.
Yeah, exactly.
He's a mother.
Yes, exactly. Another feeling. My daughter rode for a long time, too. So, okay, thank you. All right, so first on the agenda is review the revisions to administrative regulations forty-two eleven-one and forty-two eleven-two. Dr. Cale?
Yes, thank you, and I guess it's still afternoon, isn't it?
Yes.
Good afternoon officially? Good afternoon. There were two administrative regulations that were not included in the bulk of the audit that was previously presented to the PPC, so I'm coming forward with those today. And the revisions have to do with aligning the language to the peer interview process that we now have in place for the school district of Janesville. So, as you can see from your PPC packet, you were provided that information with all of the changes noted through either align through deleted language and boldface for additional language. One of those have to do with the process for recruitment, selection, and employment of administrators, and the second one has to do with the recruitment, selection, and employment of professionally licensed staff.
This is just discussion right now, so does anybody have any comments?
I'm looking at forty-two eleven point one. On page one, second paragraph, it says screening of the admin applicants will be performed by the district administrator or designee, but then on the top of the next page, after number seven, it says screening of applications is performed by the building principal. And that looks like language that's in the following ones. I'm wondering if that paragraph is out of place or is that supposed to be there? If so, I'm confused.
Sure.
Is it, say again, because I'm trying to find it quickly.
Oh, sure.
Four-two-one-one.
Yeah, four-two-one-one point one.
The first, second, first.
Yeah, the second paragraph, at the end of the second paragraph, screening by the district administrator, and then after the numbers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, where they're crossed out, then it says screening of applications is performed by the building principal, but I think that's, that paragraph shows up again in the next one. So, I'm wondering if there was a.
Right.
Paste-paster or something.
Thank you, that was, that was. Because if we're talking about the recruitment, selection, employment of administrators, that would be the district administrator or the designee.
Okay.
Correct. So, so then I would delete screening of applications is performed by the district administrator or other district administration. The district administrator or other district administrator.
Okay, and then so that next.
I will make that change.
That next, that, that paragraph where it says it's performed by building principal, then it goes on to say selected applicants will receive a structured teacher interview. So, yeah, I think that whole paragraph is.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I will delete that. Just delete that particular paragraph because you're right, that should have been.
Yeah, I think it shows up in the next one.
And that's the correct place for it.
Okay, that's what I thought, so.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Questions, comments? I have none, so I guess we'll move on. And Dr. Cale, it's you again. This time for review quarterly employee handbook updates and to consider approval to move to full board.
Yes. In your package, you received a memo prior to the list of changes, and I just wanted to point out especially to new board members that we do have a cycle in which we review the employee handbook. So, I provided that cycle for you. Organize the employee handbook updates or changes according to where you would find, find it in the current handbook, the current page, a brief description of the change, and the reason behind it. So, as you can see in the acknowledgement page, we had some changes to the website, so I aligned the language so that we could find the employee handbook in the proper place now that we've made that change. The second change is also on the acknowledgement page, and again, it was a location of where you can find the handbook. The third change is regarding definitions. Instead of using the category of exempt and non-exempt employees, really, the language that we use here is far more aligned with administrative, classified, professional staff, and support staff. So, the exempt definitions will be deleted and then replaced with these definitions. These are also the definitions that you see when we talk about benefits, especially early retiree benefits as well. The next one is, the location is part one in the attendance section. It was just a matter that we had section nine, refer to section nine. It should be refer to section ten, so it's a typo. Location, next one, location, part one, attendance, again, we just added the word "or notification" with regards to an employee who misses two consecutive days of work without approval or notification, that's the addition, may be considered to have voluntarily quit their job. The next one we have is part one. It's in part one, communications through electronic resources. We've made a change. We've added some information about best practice in changing your password, and also we added some language that aligns with Board Policy six-seven-two-four. As a condition of use, users understand that they have no expectation of privacy in anything they create, store, send, disseminate, or receive via the school district's technology and networks. This is all new information. The next change we have is location is in part one, and by the way, part one refers to all employees. This is regarding overtime. The current language is going to be replaced with some, with I would call much more streamlined language. Employees whose job is, the new language is employees whose job duties qualify them for overtime compensation under the Fair Labor Standards Act will receive one time and one half, time and one-half compensation for each hour worked over forty in a work week or two compensatory time taken within the same pay period as allowed by law. The intent isn't changed, it's just the language is, clear it up. Next one is location, part one, again, required vehicle used by employee. This is new language. It's always been a requirement, but we haven't had it in the handbook, so we added this. So, this applies to any employee who may need their vehicle, for instance, somebody who has more than one school location and they use their vehicle to go from school to school. They need to have a license and a proof of insurance on file. Part two refers to professionally licensed staff that are non-administrative, and so we have our first changes in supervision and evaluation section, and we've deleted some language there regarding the evaluation because now we're aligned with the educator effectiveness model, and that we saw in our board policy changes previously. Part three is for, it's currently called non-exempt staff. The first change is to change that heading to classified staff, and that is really our maintenance, our clerical staff, our food service, our paraprofessionals. So, that's the first change, as you can see. The second change in that period has to do with lunch periods, and again, it's not a change, but it's adding language. It's again, a practice that we do, but we've not had it in the handbook, and that refers to anyone who works the weekend events. Staff working seven hours or more at weekend events must take a thirty-minute lunch break and one fifteen-minute break for every four hours that they work. Now, we get into our appendixes and the paid holidays. We are looking at deleting the floating holidays for secretary, clerks, and aides and confidential staff, and the reason is that it was last year that we had announced that the floating holidays would be, this, that was the last year of the floating holidays. The grand, the confidential staff, I think there's only three that are grandfathered into the floating holiday. So, that just shows that change. The next appendix change is the schedule of paid vacation. And what we did was we aligned all of the paid vacation allotments to the staff that have been hired after July first, 2013. It doesn't affect anyone on the front end, if you will, meaning no one who is currently employed is losing any weeks of vacation, and in fact, what happens is that our, under our classified, our clerical group, they're actually getting their five weeks a year earlier with this change. So, they may be losing a floating holiday, but they gained a week of vacation a year earlier. So, but that now aligns the, all the classified staff together. And then our final, I think it's our final appendix, yep, it is our school blackout days, and every year we update those blackout days. And I don't know if you have, it wasn't published, the blackout days weren't ready at the time you received your packet, so I do have that available till you know. And these will all be part of the July first published handbook, all set for July first if they need approval.
Hey, Ellen, this is an action item, so Dr. Cale, are you finished?
Yes, I am.
So, I'll entertain a motion and a second so we can begin discussion about it. All right, yep.
I move to bring to the full board for approval.
Second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second, and any discussion? We're very quiet today.
This was.
Yeah. Come on.
This is kind of the easy stuff.
I know, this is the easy stuff. Okay, seeing no discussion.
I have a question.
Oh, there you go.
But now, the board pertaining, is it still the board goal to where we can standardize all the fringe benefits when we can? Do you understand the question? Is it still the board goal when, to standardize or, there are different fringe benefits for different employees at different levels within the school district, because it's still our goal to eventually standardize those and make them consistent among all the groups?
Well, it has been. The, the board has changed, so I, I wouldn't know actually what the board is thinking now as a collective group, if that's still something that they're looking at doing across the board or not. That's something we will want to find out.
Well, the only reason I raise the question is because, you know, when you looked at the, the case and schedules between the different employees, they noticed that there were differences, so that's why I raised the question.
And you're correct, that has been the path we've been going down this past year, is to get things standardized. So, now with the new board in place, we'll have to find out if we want to continue that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous, so okayed. Let's move on. Okay, this is, next on the agenda is Attorney Lewis, and we're going to be talking about the issue of just cause.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners and administrators and guests. Before I start, I'd, I'd like to just take twenty seconds to say from our perspective as your board attorney, how much we've enjoyed working with Dr. Cargill and Dr. Cale, and it's really been a privilege to work with both of them, very accomplished professionals, and I've worked especially closely with Dr. Cale, who is a professional of great integrity, and I've appreciated my time working with her. I just wanted to mention that. But, so moving on to the question, my understanding is that the, the last PPC meeting, there was some question about the just cause standard and how it applies, given all the changes that the school districts in Wisconsin have seen in the law. So, what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and talk about what the school district, the school district of Janesville currently has as its standards, and then answer any questions that you might have. You have a few different operative agreements in terms of applying a, what kind of standard would apply to discharging, and I think we're talking mostly about discharging a teacher or a licensed professional and how that works. And everyone is familiar with the fact that the district until relatively recently had labor contracts that applied traditional labor standards to termination of licensed professionals and specifically teachers, and in, since Act Ten, and all school districts in Wisconsin moving away as required by Act Ten from the labor contract requirements, the handbook has been incorporated. It's been adapted to board policy, and there's been a transition to try to maintain proper legal standards, standards that meet the state and federal constitutional requirements as well as Wis, current Wisconsin state statutes, and what's best for the school district of Janesville. So, I'm going to walk you through some of the documentation, and I don't know if you have it on your systems, or if you don't, I can send you notes as well, but the hand, starting with the handbook, and you do have these sections in your PPC packet, part two, section one point oh-three, which is actually page sixty-three of the handbook, contains an at-will employment standard for professional licensed staff. And it, it basically says that if a professional licensed employee is going to be terminated, an at-will standard applies, and it's, the handbook is cross, cross-references on page sixty-three to part one, section six point oh-three, which is page forty-five, and that section says, as, section six point oh-three on page forty-five says, as an at-will employee, district employees may also be terminated without prior notice or disciplinary action. That's a, kind of a typical rendition of an at-will termination standard, which applies to most private employers in Wisconsin and in, in every other state, which says basically we can let people go for any reason or no reason. That's the at-will standard. So, so point one would be the handbook as it stands applies an at-will standard for discipline and involuntary termination to professional licensed staff. However, appendix F of the handbook, and I'm looking at page ninety-three, is the, describes the district's grievance procedure, and in the grievance procedure on page ninety-three, there's a section that discusses termination of an employee with a contract for a definite term. And under, it's A sub, small triple I, or A three, A three contains a good and sufficient cause standard. So, the question is, well, which, which applies at-will or good and sufficient cause, and how do we manage that? If you look at appendix F, it really lays out the process for how the board would assess a termination of a licensed professional or a teacher, a recommendation coming from Dr. Sperry or Dr. Sheltie to the board to say, we feel that this individual's contract, this individual's contract should be terminated typically mid-year. We're not talking about non-renewal, we're actually talking about a situation where you, the board is getting a recommendation from administration that the, this individual's employment should be terminated, and they are under contract, and we should terminate the contract. And appendix F is the details of how that process should go, what the board has adopted in terms of the process for determining whether that termination should occur, and what process the individual teacher or employee is allowed to have before that decision is made and afterward on appeal. I then looked at to say, well, we have these two standards, what do the teacher contracts say? And I, I didn't know if you'd have copies of those, but I, I did bring some. They really don't, they're not inconsistent in that they say that the, the, when you are hired as a teacher for the school district of Janesville, the rules, regulations, policies, and handbooks adopted by the Board of Education now existing or which hereafter may be adopted apply. So, it's a, it's an overall, you have to follow whatever rules we have in place at the time. So, by, the contract doesn't change these two standards that are currently operating in the handbook. Then, board policy, which really is the umbrella over the handbook, the teacher contracts, everything else. Board policy has, not inconsistent language, but more traditional language that I think is a carryover for several years, saying that the district administrator, Dr. Sheltie, can recommend the discharge or termination of employment of professional staff for reasons outlined in temporary suspension policy. Those are insubordination, misconduct, immorality, inefficiency, or any other reason which, in her opinion, is not becoming to a school district of Janesville employee. Or, and that board policy, it's forty-two sixty-five, has been updated to add to that, that list of reasons, whatever's in the employee handbook. So, we have a loop, basically. I believe, when you look at all of this together, that the, there is, continues to be a just cause standard that applies to teachers when the termination decision comes to the board for review. I, I want to qualify that, though, by saying that when an issue has to do, and this is my understanding of how this works, when the issue has to do with teacher performance, there is a whole separate process that leads to typically non-renewal, and there's an extensive support and evaluation process called remediation that the administration has adopted and applies, and it's intended to last for a specific period of time, up to a year, maybe even more than a year, but they're, they, providing the individual with the tools to, communicating the issues, providing the individual with the tools to address those issues. So, we're not talking about non, non-renewal or performance issues. This is typically going to come up where there's an incident that's very, very serious that the administration feels they have to recommend termination to the board mid-year, mid-contract, before renewal comes up. I, I think that, I mean, it would be nice if all this language were all coordinated, and that probably should happen, but I do think that, you know, from a practical standpoint, when is this going to come to you is when one of these just cause reasons has occurred. I think it's, it's really unlikely that you're going to get a termination recommendation from administration that wouldn't already fall into one of the reasons that is either in the handbook or in the board policy. So, risk is low that you're going to have this really big conflict between an at-will recommendation for a mid-year termination of a teacher. But to make your lives easier, I do think that it would be something, my recommendation would be that, you know, we can work with, we can try to make the language a little more clear and coordinated so that you have a unified standard to apply. And the, the last thing, just one note, and I guess I have my note is, you know, just to reconcile, I have a reconcile with question mark, so that's, I guess, the, the open issue from my standpoint, from, and from a legal standpoint. The, just a, a quick note, I mean, do, the due process requirements, when the state creates employment, whether that's state employment or school district employment, the state defines what rights the individual has before they lose that employment. So, that's where the due process comes in, and the district as a local government entity also defines what an employee is entitled to before they would lose their teaching position, for example, which you've done in that appendix F. That's the, the due process rights is the process we have to go through before we tell you we're discharging you and depriving you of the remainder of the term of your contract. So, and, and you have a very consistent and extensive due pro, due process description of the grievance procedure. It comes to the board, the board reviews, it goes to an independent hearing officer, the hearing officer makes a decision, there's an appeal process after that. That's the, that's what's meant by due process, is the, the steps we have to take to evaluate the situation before we terminate your contract.
All right, it's just not listed as an action item, so do we have some discussion questions?
Even though the contracts have been abolished, just cause doesn't have to be, and you indicated that just cause is basically being followed anyway, I, I do believe that, that it should go further and just cause should be a part of the handbook. It's, it's good for everyone. I, I have some handouts, if you guys want to look at them, reasons why just cause is, is necessary. The seven tests for just cause, it, it not only protects the employees, but it protects the district. And you had said that it, it was to make our lives a little bit easier, but I, I don't, I don't think that that should be, you know, a basis. I think we need to do what is fair and what is equitable, and I think just cause answers that. When you have an independent hearing, I can, I can tell you from experience, it's not necessarily going to work. There, there are a lot of, there's a lot of room for error, and we just had with a county, a twenty-seven-year employee who was terminated. We went through the just cause, or I mean, the, the HO hearing, they, it went to the county board, it was found that the, the county, even, even though the county was found arbitrary and capricious, the standard by which the county board was directed to make their decision wasn't clear. It was a thirteen to twelve vote that this person not be given her job back. Well, now that's been taken one step further, it's going to the circuit court to have them bring it back to the county board and make their decision based on the proper standard. The district employees bargained for these rights. This is something that goes, goes way back, and I, I think it's something that needs to continue. I think it's very important. I think it would show goodwill. It's worked so far, and I, I don't see any reason why it can't continue on. I think it's something that needs to be, be in the handbook, and if you guys would like to see my handout, I'd be happy to share that.
Sure. And I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, Commissioner, were you?
Are you finished for now, or did you want to?
Well.
Ask you a question, or?
Do you, I mean, I'm finished for, for.
Okay.
The moment, yes.
Sure. And just, just to comment, Commissioner, I, that is cer, is very, is certainly an option that the board could adopt. As I was saying, the standard that the district would like to, I mean, the district can adopt As I was saying, the standard that the district would like to, I mean, the district can adopt a full just cause standard in every document that you have, if you choose to do that. Or, I mean, it's, the process will be, the due process will be around what the district wants to offer to employees. And if that's the standard that was in the labor contracts, the board is entitled to adopt that standard. You can't negotiate it under Act 10, you have to just vote for it as a board and adopt it as a board. The pros and cons of that are obviously subject to board consideration. And so, you know, I can, I'm here to tell you what your legal obligations are, what you are able to do or not do, and whether it's the best thing for the district is your decision.
Dr. Schulte?
Well, it's my understanding that what we've put into place wasn't the best interest of our employees. We have a corrective action, I think, what are we calling that process? Corrective action, a remediation plan, because we invest in our employees. Obviously, we train them, we spend time with them, and there's a cost to that. So, we have no interest in moving people out, even when there are infractions that occur, that has happened. We want to work with our employees. Mistakes happen, obviously, we know that. And so, we work, our HR department works with remediation to make sure those things are corrected and that we keep our employees. So my understanding, the handbook was created to have a fair plan in place that helps employees continue on, not to terminate our employees.
Dale?
Well, I'm hearing two things here. I'm hearing Commissioner Quirk say that we need, that's a little bit weak in our handbook and that it needs to be strengthened, from what I'm hearing you say, is that correct?
Yes.
For just cause? And then, I thought I heard our attorney say that, putting that aside, that there may be value in relooking at where there may be some confusion or it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, that should go on irregardless of just cause? Discussion?
Yes, just from, just from a legal standpoint, giving, having the board have one set of standards that you will know to apply, as in Commissioner Quirk's very good example, I don't have, I don't know anything personally about that situation, but the way that you described it, the board may have been confused about what their standard was, or there may have been some confusion about what the standard was through the process. That's, I don't think anyone wants to put an employee in that situation of not understanding what standard is applying to this important decision. And so, certainly you want language that is clear and effectively, and that effectively communicates to employees, whatever the standard is that you would like to use. So I'm really looking at it more from a technical standpoint of saying, you've got a couple different things going on here, they all come to the same conclusion, they could probably be a little more clear and coordinated, and I think that would be helpful. If you do get the situation coming to you where you actually, where administration actually was recommending mid-year termination of a teacher's contract, you really need to know how to, what standard you're supposed to apply to that decision.
Well, and that's why I think just cause is, is something that needs to be part of the handbook. There are a few, you know, changes to the handbook. I have crossed out the corrective action for unacceptable behaviors in 6.02 regarding the PPC committee chair, that, you know, that's probably a little extreme, but I think that these other changes, however, you know, small, that they have a big impact on the disciplinary process. And I do think that just, the just cause standard is understandable, it's equitable, it's fair, and I think that that's something that everybody can understand. I have represented employees, and I, we have gone through the just cause standard. And in the end, they wouldn't modify their behavior, there was nothing, absolutely nothing that could be done other than to terminate these employees. And they were denied unemployment because it was so cut and dried. Now, when this case is heard before, the case I was speaking of before is heard by the county board, the likelihood that it will be overturned is significant, and this person has been, will have lost benefits and her employment for however, you know, however many months it was, just being able to collect unemployment. And that's, it's a shame, but it can happen more than not because varying groups of people don't, might not understand the same standard. It's, 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 it's easy for somebody with, you know, a legal education to understand what their guide is and what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to come to the decision, but I don't think a board of, you know, different people are going to be able to make that decision. That's why the just cause standard is so important. It's cut and dried, and there really, there's very little room for error. I think it's important, and I support it 100%.
Dr. Sperry?
If it's okay with PPC Chair, I would like our, the attorney, board's attorney, to weigh in on, there's so many different definitions of just cause, and I think it can be interpreted in a number of ways. So, is there, I'm not trying to blindside you, but can you share some background on that, Julie? It would be helpful.
There are many definitions, they, and you have two of them. I mean, you have one in the Board policy, you have another one, very similar, but a little bit more extensive in the handbook itself. And those are the definitions of just cause or good cause that the district has used now for many years. So, if, I think that's one issue, is, is there a need to even change that? If it's something that applies and works and is already in the Board policy, what should it say differently? But, yes, just cause can be specific to the industry. I think people who worked in these environments will know, you know, construction industry may have its own definitions of just cause. You know, education has different definitions that traditionally have been used. Public employment in, maybe at the county detention center, those employees may have different definitions of just cause because of what they're required to do, the training and skill that they need, and what could constitute misconduct. Generally, it's a misconduct standard. I think that's the general definition. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Isn't, if you're fired from a job in the private sector and you go to seek unemployment, is there not a just cause standard that's applied to that situation?
In, for unemployment compensation?
Yes.
Basically, there is. I think that's right. I mean, they really, you, you know, there is, you have to, there are certain types of misconduct that will prevent you from being entitled to unemployment compensation. So pretty much, that's how it works.
Okay, thank you. And we've been talking a lot about teachers, and I know we have the remediation process and all that kind of stuff, but I don't, and I, but I want to make sure that our focus, our focus is not entirely on teachers, right? It's that they don't necessarily have, always have exactly the same remediation process, to my knowledge, you know, but, but, and they're not necessarily contracted employees. So, this is, I think, to me, a little bit different kind of situation. You know, the just cause thing, to me, is about us speaking, all speaking the same language. And, you know, it's one of the first things that I establish in my classroom, the terminology and stuff that I'm working with, with students, it's that I want to make sure we're all talking the same language here, so you know. And so, the one thing I like about the just cause thing is that it's a standard that seems to apply to a variety of industries, and that we would all be speaking the same language. I noticed in one thing here, in the handout that Commissioner Quirk provided us with, which I don't, right here. In Appendix F, and it's in the section for procedure for impartial hearing, A and small 2, the, they want to, the recommendation might be to remove something like, saying, if it's not arbitrary and capricious, and then replace it with something to the effect of, if it's based on a just cause. And while they might sound like they're saying the same thing, and I'm thankful that it's not arbitrary and capricious, because that's exactly what just cause is supposed to do, but this, but to me, just cause means that you're speaking the same language, and that you are, that you have a procedure, you know, that, and I'd like to see that, I'd kind of like to see that our procedure is kind of, you know, matches up with that. I think that some of the recommendations that are provided here are merely just making sure that we're all saying the same thing. You know, I know you haven't had any time really to review this, but, you know, so. Carla?
I also, oh.
No, no, I'm just doing what I do in my classroom, like you, and then you. And then you.
I also know that the unemployment standards mirror just cause. That's why it's very easy, after following the just cause process, you know, sometimes it takes six months, but the independent hearing can take long, and now, the whole process is going to take better than a year. But, the unemployment standards are basically the same as, as the just cause standards that we would like to see incorporated into the handbook. The unemployment hearing for this terminated employee said that they're definitely entitled to unemployment. They said that their findings were incorrect. That is, you know, that's exactly what they said. And with that much room for error, I think, being spelled out in the just cause standards that I've shown you, I think it makes sense. I really think it's a step forward, and I think it's a very important step forward.
You're finished?
I'm finished, no.
What I'm, I guess what I'm looking at right now is, in the School District of Janesville, we have what we call a certain culture. And I actually had experience, pleasure, working with Jim Malard, Donna Stenner, Dave Parr, on corrective action. Not yet, Dave, but Dave, hopefully, we can kind of put that off to the side, we don't have to do that. But it's on corrective action, and it is our expectation with our culture that all 1,400 employees are going to be treated that same, that same way for the corrective action. I think where we're probably going into the next level is maybe under Board Policy 4120, where we start getting into ethical conduct or misconduct. And that's where maybe Julie is hitting us on the head, where we would look at that piece to see if we can sharpen up some things that are in that handbook, not knowing if we have to put the two words "just cause" in there or not, but I would be interested in what the board's attorney may offer for some type of suggestions to come to some type of an agreement here that, because I don't believe that there's ever been an intent here to terminate someone without having reason to do that. And that's where I get into the ethical conduct portion, if it's something against a student or other, or other employees, or something that's immoral, those type of things, as opposed to us working through some corrective action and saying to people, "Look, we can coach you through this, we can support you, we just have to see some type of progress being made." That's something a little less than what we're talking about as far as terminating, terminating an employee, like the example that you provided from the county.
Dr. Cale? And then, Commissioner Thompson?
As you can imagine, I've been involved with the employee handbooks from the very beginning, right? So I did a lot of research, of course, in providing, making, creating the drafts. And when it came to the operational review, that probably took more research than any other part in so many ways. And when I digest the seven tests for just cause, I find the seven tests within the employee handbook, especially with regards to our corrective action steps. We also, and maybe you're not aware of it, but we also go through training with all of our supervisors, whether they be a principals or managers, on disciplinary action, including termination, and especially with regard to things such as, you know, making sure that you, if you have investigated a situation, that it has been a thorough investigation, that this isn't arbitrary, that you are using the same standard for all employees and not just making an exception of a rule for a person for disciplinary reasons. And, you know, when I looked at this adequate warning, oh, our corrective action plan demonstrates significant adequate warning for anyone. One, two, three written warnings, extensive remediation processes, working closely with our representatives from the union still with regards to employees when they come forward with a remediation. I also look at the completeness of our investigation. I think we, I have to tell you, I think we go out of our way to make certain that we have met that standard. Objectivity of investigation, when it comes to an investigation, we usually have one person in our department who does the investigation, and then other administrators to talk through that disciplinary process. So the two are separate, person who does the investigation and the person who talks and works through the disciplinary action, if there are any, as a result of that investigation. So, you know, when I look at this, I guess I would ask you, and I'm not asking in a way to raise conflict or anything, but what in our processes, or in our board policies, or in our practice, or in the handbook, and in our standards of professional development or professional behavior, do we see that these standards don't come through? Because we've really worked hard to make sure that, maybe the language may not be the same, but certainly the intent and certainly the process, I think, is, is there?
Did you want to answer that?
Yes.
Okay.
The intent, you say the intent remains the same, and I got that, but I think that it needs to be spelled out as the just cause standards. I think that that's very important. It's worked all of these years, and I don't, I don't see a reason why it should cease. It's been valuable, it's worked, and I, it's something, just because of Act 10, I don't think it needs to change. So many other things have changed, and I just think it's extremely important to maintain the high level, both with the employees and, you know, with the management. I think it's a way for everybody to come together and understand everything specifically and be spelled out where it's, you know, I'm sure, it's, it seems that it's spelled out in the handbook to have it all condensed into a just cause standard, makes sense, and it's very clear, and I completely think it's necessary.
Okay, Dale, before I get to you, I just want to say one thing really quickly in answer to that. I think what, to me, the just cause, I think we're talking about some minor changes to language, not necessarily a revamping of the process. I think that, that, I know for my purposes, just cause, to me, is like, not, nobody's saying here that anybody has been fired for arbitrary or capricious reasons, you know, or anything like that. We're not saying that at all. What we're saying is, is that it provides a What we're saying is that it provides a standard, a level, and a level of understanding from this point on for possible future problems. This is more of a forward-looking kind of thing as opposed to a backward kind of thing. And, and so, I don't think that, I think that, that, it's also something that I know happens to be important to a number of our employees, and that they would appreciate having this kind of language in the handbook. And, you know, having that sort of common communication would make a big difference to them. And I think, I think that it's worth, you know, doing this for some sort of a, being on the same page, you know, with our employees and, and, you know, working with them on this. So that's, that's my thought on it at this point. Dale?
So may I assume that you're going to put this on the next committee agenda for further discussion, which would then give us an opportunity to look at the recommendations you're making, and give us, the committee members, a chance to see what the changes are and what it means. It would give the attorney a chance to look at it and give us your reaction. And frankly, I'd like staff to be able to look at it also, and based upon whatever that is, then we can decide what we're going to do, if anything. Is that where you're coming from? Are you going to put it in the next agenda? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I was thinking that we would, and we would, and we can look at these recommendations and see if they are, you know, palatable to everybody and, and come to some consensus about it, so.
Fine.
Mr.?
Another question.
Dr. Perry?
If we were to move and look at the, to move and put just cause into the handbook, Julie, does that mean then we're taking out the grievance procedure itself?
No, and really, it's, it's in the handbook, but it's not in the main part of the handbook. I think that's kind of, that's what's confusing to everybody, understandably. So what's in Appendix F, which is the list of the good cause reasons, is that's part of the handbook. It's just not in the part that most people would go to, to look and say, what are the reasons that my, you know, I can be discharged? So that, it might even just be what they call Scrivener's error, you know, just carrying it over into the main part of the handbook as well and making that more clear. One point of clarification would be, and Commissioner Quirk, I haven't had the chance to study your recommendations really closely, but the arbitrary and capricious standard generally, and you may have had a different experience, and the way I read it in the grievance process that would continue to apply, we'd not be removing anything, is that the employee who, if the administration decides to bring a recommendation to the board that an employee should be terminated, typically under contract is when that would come to the board. The board assesses that, evaluation decides yes or no, this termination meets our just cause standard or not. The employee, if you, if the board decides that this employee should, there is just cause or good cause to discharge this employee based on our board policy, then the employee has the right to have an independent hearing officer review that decision. And the independent hearing officer's standard is that arbitrary and capricious standard. So basically, they're saying, the board has reviewed the facts of this situation, has maybe heard, received some testimony, received information from employees. So they are the fact, the board is the fact finder on this situation. So any review of the board's decision shouldn't go back to ground zero and redo, reinvent the wheel and hear everything again. The IHO and any appeal beyond that should be, should overturn the board's decision only if it's arbitrary and capricious. So that's where that stand, it is a really broad standard. It, you know, that's where that tends to fit in, in general administrative procedures, to say, the reviewing court or body shouldn't overturn the fact finder unless that decision appears so out of bounds and, you know, beyond what the policy requires, that they, they really say that the board made a mistake based on its own procedure.
Yes, Carla?
The problem with the arbitrary and capricious standard is that somebody, it's not, it can be based on, well, a lot of things. And the employee can be terminated immediately and not having to go in, where, can be terminated immediately, and the just cause practice would have the steps and the person would retain their employment and their benefits and continue on. Now, with the current policy, they could be terminated immediately and then go back and say, well, you know, what kind of an investigation was done? There might not have been a proper investigation. I just, I think there's, there's too much, again, there's too much room for error, and I just, I think the arbitrary and capricious standard is, is flawed and it doesn't work. And it, it, the employees of the district shouldn't have to fear something like that. They, it should be consistent. Instead of going from a step one, you know, the step one part of the, the written, you know, on and on and on, they could be terminated immediately and for any reason at all at will. And I, I think this is something that, you know, we need, we need to discuss and, and both, I, it needs to, we need to take action on it sooner than later. It, it's too important. It really is too important to, to let go. It's necessary.
Okay, well, I think we'll bring this up again after you get a chance to look at the recommendations, and we'll bring this up again and discuss it further and maybe make it an action item the next time around?
For July.
For July? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Schulte, the review of the Wisconsin Global Education Achievement Certificate? This is an action item.
It is indeed. All righty, you have the memo in front of you in the board packet.
The state of Wisconsin is promoting the Wisconsin Global Education Achievement Certificate created by a DPI that allows students to be recognized for their global citizenship by completing a global education curriculum and engaging in co-curricular activities and experiences that foster the development of global competencies. Many of these items are already happening, if not all of them, in our district. So really what we want to move, we want to move down the path of having our students have that ability to get this extra global achievement certificate when they graduate, if they should choose. And so we would lay out exactly everything that they would have to do to participate in so that they would be able to do that. You saw from your packet, there are over 50 school districts already that have joined up, and you join the Wisconsin Global Schools Network. And so what I'm simply asking, as we continue this conversation, and I included some policies and direction from other school districts, is that we start working on a policy for this that just lays it out for everyone, so, again, the kids that are interested in this know a path to go down.
Do I have a motion to accept Dr. Schulte's recommendation?
Move it.
Okay, second? Okay. All right, so discussion, questions? Well, I like it.
I do, too. Thank you. Let's do it.
I, but you know how I feel about global literacy and, and language and that kind of thing, and if this, you know, is something, a goal that a student can work toward, I think it's a really good idea. And, you know, it doesn't, it's just, it's just a wonderful way to acknowledge these kids for this kind of work, which I think is very important, so.
It's a lot of the work they're already doing.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, I was just going to add to that to make sure that it's something that students that either Craig and Parker or any of our charter schools can accomplish too, because it's something that could be, it could be done in a number of different ways. They could get really creative, so.
Right. So we can bring policy back in July as well, the actual written policy of the team sitting here. Which one of you will undertake that policy writing?
I think we'll do it together, but it falls under the credit evaluation part of my job, so I'm happy to lead that.
Okay, very good. So we'll look for a draft at the next cabinet meeting on Monday, and then we'll look for bringing it here in July.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, next, Dr. Sperry, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing an independent hearing officer.
And for three out of the four board members, this may be new stuff here, but for Kristin, it's not new stuff.
Didn't we just do this? I know I say that every day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, seeing the reason why is the Board of Education is required annually to review the adoption of a resolution for an independent hearing officer or to hear expulsions. So really, what the board has is three options. The first option is to use the full Board of Education to listen to all expulsions. The second option is to use a panel, and the third option is to adopt an independent hearing officer to hear expulsions. So in 2009, the School District of Janesville's Board of Education adopted the last one. They wanted to have an independent hearing officer. Prior to that, some of you are nodding, we did have the full board review expulsions. And they just, I think the board just got to a point and said, no, we're, we don't want to be spending all this time hearing that, we'll listen, we'll have the IHO, the independent hearing officer, do these, and then listen to those in closed session. So it's an annual resolution to make a decision. If you choose to go through the IHO, then I have a recommendation for the independent hearing officer.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to accept?
Someone.
Second, moving second in. Okay, discussion, do you have a question?
I do. The independent hearing officer, is this person the same person that would hear the, would be doing the hearing for the IHO, for the grievance process? Is that the same person?
No, and I'm glad that you asked that, because the grievance procedure has an impartial hearing officer, and we have an independent hearing officer, and they're not the same person.
Okay, so I know, and people get confused about the independent part.
Yes.
So that's, I wanted to.
I think earlier we were using the word independent rather than impartial, and for that piece, it is an impartial hearing officer. This is an independent hearing officer, and they are separate.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, well, all in favor of the resolution authorizing an independent hearing officer? Should say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that seems to be it. Okay, and next up, your, your recommendation.
I just happen to have a recommendation. So the board has in previous years approved annual resolution for an IHO and to hear these expulsions. What we've been going with for a number of years is Sarah Garrig, she's very familiar with working with all of our students in the School District of Janesville. She knows the standard, and she's not increasing her rates at all, she's maintaining her rates. I believe in your packet, you probably saw from 2009 to the current, what we had been, what we had been charged as a fee per case. And there's, there's considerable amount of hours that are associated with reviewing these packets, and then also carrying out the actual event. So I would recommend Sarah Garrig as our independent hearing officer for the year 1516 school year.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Someone.
Okay, second?
Third.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor of accepting the recommendations, should say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, done.
Thank you.
One and done. Okay. Then Dr. Schulte, we have the discussion to consider approval to move to the full board restructuring of the Director of the CIA.
Realize how we oversaw them.
Yeah. In our case, meaning Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and the Director of Student Services. I'll let you take that.
All right. Thank you. This is a lot, a lot of information, so hold on to your hats. I will start with the memo. That forward. Mine weren't in color.
Can help you.
Send them to Denise.
Yes.
So if you could give mine to, uh.
Well, as I said, I packed a lot of information into this request. The first five positions, and you see that little chart there that I put on the memo, have to do with the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and Student Services. And you need to remember that Student Services includes the large Division of Special Education, so that's a whole entity unto itself. So we have restructured these departments in the past based on the strength of the people working in them, and we constantly reassess this. And I personally think it's time to do another trial, and you probably wonder why. Why is she mucking around now with all of this, all of these positions? It would be so much easier to just leave things alone and go to the next thing. However, first of all, we have some highly trained staff in this area. In fact, as I was reflecting on this, we actually have five people currently in our midst that are licensed as Directors of Student Services, and we have all served as Directors of Student Services, all of us sitting here, Dr. Cale, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Gargile, Dr. Schulte, and we also have Chris Westling, who has served as a consultant, also has been a Director of Student Services. So the level of expertise in that area and in special ed, special ed law, is quite extraordinary, I think, for this organization, so I think why not tap the talent that we have here? So that's one of the ways I've been thinking about this. Secondly, folks, as you know very well, the budget picture is just not looking any better. And so as I represented superintendents in this area of the region last Friday, and we looked at what's in the joint finance budget, it's scary, it's really scary. So I, I just feel like with every position, we have to keep looking at it and looking at ways to save money as well. So that's the method to my madness here. So as you look at the positions, what I am proposing is that we eliminate the Director of Student Services position, which is Yolanda's current position, and we also eliminate the Supervisor of Special Education, and that's Dr. Kelly's position, she's sitting there as well to add any extra information, and to create two different positions as a result. So instead of a director position, we would look at an Assistant Director of Student Services that Dr. Kelly would assume, and then I would create a Coordinator of Student Services. And you'll see in a little bit here, some savings from that. And then we would redesign some positions. So I would take the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and that is Dr. Kim Erhart, and I would redesign his position as director over two very large departments, Student Services and Curriculum. Now you might ask, other than the fact, are you crazy, Karen? Has this ever been done before? And it has, in 1989, Dr., or Gary Bursell actually was over both departments. So I called Gary to check his thinking on that, and I asked him some questions about it, and if he thought that was something we could do, at least in the short term. And he said, yes, he did it for a short term, and he felt like that's something that we could do as well. And we know also that 1516 is going to be a challenging year. We don't get the $150 we thought we might get per student, and the budget is tighter than we like. So I think if we're going to look at this, we have the expertise that continues in our district, and we know it's going to be a tight budget year. 1617 looks better right now. It does sound like on July 2016, we get that $150 per student, and then some other dollars coming with that. So that's part of the reason for the proposal. So if you go to the second and third pages, you can see some of the projected savings. So we have So we have the current salary of the Director of Student Services. Each of the positions that we are restructuring, the Director of CIA and the Assistant Director of Student Services, I am proposing a five thousand dollar increase to their salary. And then the Coordinator of Student Services, that particular position, I would look at posting that position. And then you see a salary range there from fifty-five thousand on the low end, up to eighty-six thousand on the high end. So, it does depend on who applies and how we hire for that. So the projected savings could be anywhere from thirty to sixty-two thousand. We know sixty-two thousand is equivalent to a teaching position. So, I'm going to stop there with that part before we go on to the Director of International Programs. I did copy for you, if you're interested, all of the job descriptions, those being eliminated, those that are going to be restructured. And so, I will hand those out.
Actually, that was one of my questions, was going to be, what is a coordinator versus a director?
Correct, okay. So, as you look at the different positions, the Director position is a cabinet position. It's a senior level management position or administrative position. Most directors are licensed as administrators, and they serve on my cabinet, so they are part of strategic planning. They are my voice throughout the district. So, if Dr. Sperry is speaking, typically, he's speaking for me. Positions, other positions such as a coordinator or supervisor position would be similar to a middle management position. Along with the information that I passed out to you, I'm also going to pass out some background information. It may or may not be pertinent to you. Those of you that work in schools or in your position, Commissioner Thompson, are pretty familiar with all the different positions that come in Student Services. And, well, you've written about them and lived them, and in special education. But if you're not as familiar, this document might be helpful to you. We created it a couple of years ago to describe all the different positions and how they intersect with different students. So we actually came up with case studies. So use it as it is helpful to you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So if I understand the proposal, Dr. Kelly will be promoted and given five thousand bucks. Big deal. To be in this new position, so then you would have to replace someone for a current position, correct?
Currently, she's the supervisor, yes, for special education. So between the two areas, we would be looking at creating a coordinator of Student Services and letting go of that supervisor position, because she would be assuming some of those duties.
This needs to go to the Board when?
It'll go to the Board tomorrow.
For approval?
Yes.
All right, now, I mean, I recognize the need for fast track for this, to do something with the positions. And I'm going to read these materials, but I'm just uncomfortable with this change. I mean, the Director of, Dr. Cargill's position to me is extremely important one, and with the kids getting more and more needy to lower this and put it under Dr. Erhart, and so we save forty, fifty thousand dollars in, you know, in our budget, which is nothing. I have some discomfort here, and I'm going to read the materials and decide on that. I mean, I applaud staff for bringing this to us, but I have a lot of discomfort on if we're not watering this very important position down too much. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And you know better than a lot of us how important these positions are, and I totally agree with you. And Dr. Cargill's position is very important. We do have a high level of expertise with Dr. Kelly. She has served as Director of Student Services in several districts. She certainly could step into a Director position as well. However, again, in these tough budget times, I feel a responsibility to always be looking and restructuring and finding ways to bring more money to the table. One of the priorities of the Board is to really take a hard look and do whatever we can to bring raises for the fifteen sixteen school year. So, this is maybe not a lot of money, but it's some money, and that's what I'm offering. So that, you know, that is my rationale.
Any other comments about this portion? I think we'll do the motion after you finish the entire thing.
So the new two positions would be Assistant Director of Student Services and a Coordinator of Student Services. Would you perhaps plan on assigning, say, special education to one or the other? Would that be a split? Like, who's the go-to person for someone with a special education?
The Assistant Director, I think, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, Dr. Kelly would continue in the area and working in special education, but she would also have oversight of the entire Department of Student Services as well.
Back to the day when we had a Director of Student Services, a Coordinator of Student Services, and I believe it was a Coordinator of Special Education.
And I dream of the day that we can go back to that, because everybody is stretched thin in that department. There's no question about that.
Okay.
That's it, thanks.
Any other comments or questions about this part? I think my only concern is, you know, making sure that, that the special education component of this is, not that all of it's not important, of course, but, but to me, you know, making sure that the special education component isn't weakened in any way. You know, I know that, I know that that would never be, you know, that's one, that, your concern as well, so, you know, I get that, that's all. Okay, that was just a comment.
I'm thinking about how closely you and Barb have worked together on, you know, the Platinum Plan and the Equity and Excellence and all those sort of things. So it kind of makes sense that special education and curriculum, you know, there's, you know, those Venn diagrams. Here's, here's special education right in the middle, probably some other things as well. You know, there's counselors. Counselors have an academic part, and they have a, more of a Student Services piece, so this could be interesting. I, yeah, I do worry about these two folks being overwhelmed, so.
Okay, okay, thank you, Dr. Schulte, and the next part?
And then the other piece to this is the Director of International Programs. And I put this in because I did make some changes based on the recommendation of one of the Commissioners, Commissioner Huth, who brought an idea to me when I was already in the phase of negotiating salary with a person that we had hired that had to resign. So I thought, again, opportunity, I would look at perhaps repackaging this position with Commissioner Huth's idea of lowering the salary range. So you'll see on page three, for Director of International Programs, that we would propose the salary range from seventy to ninety thousand, and then we would create an incentive package for, for the rest of the dollars. I do believe this still needs to be a Director position. If the Board truly wants me to hand this over and have somebody else lead in this area, I think it needs to be that kind of position with somebody that can create contracts, MOUs, work with attorneys, work all over the world with heads of state and sheikhs and everything else. So I believe it still needs to be that level of a position, but I'm always intrigued at how we can bring revenue into the district and maybe use some of that revenue to pay the cost of that salary. This is certainly cutting edge beyond what probably any district has done, but I'm certainly willing to try that if it brings needed revenue into the district. As far as what that incentive package looks like, Mr. Pennington and I are working on that. We've never done this before, I haven't, he may have. So we are continuing to work that out, and I certainly would value any of your input in that too, as we look at how we would do that.
I recognize myself. So, a question then about this, especially with the incentive program. Now, what we're going to vote on here is moving that to the full Board.
Just moving it to the Board, yes.
For discussion or action? I mean.
I would like it to be for action, but if we don't have the incentive package ready tomorrow, then we may need to wait.
That was going to be my next question, is how quickly can we have this, you know.
We could act on the rest of it and not the international Director.
Correct, right, right. Okay, that was, that was my only question. Any other questions or comments about this portion of Dr. Schulte's?
I see the italicized paragraph, the salary will ultimately be paid for through the revenue of the international program and not from local dollars.
Correct.
The portion of this package is under development. There's no benefit regarding, there's no cost benefit regarding this change. Since we don't know what the implications of revenue are for this program, I mean, I don't even think we have benchmarks for the international program as to what goals need to be met. It's, it's kind of hard for me to get the big picture on this.
We do have, trying to remember what we called it, we laid out projections for what we're expecting for this year, next year, and several years out, so I can get that for you. It was probably before you started on the Board, I'm thinking. But for example, next year, we are projecting ten students to come in, so we've calculated how much revenue that would bring into the district.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
Okay, because this is so new, don't, would it be wiser to have something not quite as, something not quite the Director, but something.
Oh, at a different level?
Like, yeah, a lower level until we, I mean, you know, nobody wants anything to fall flat, but because it's so new and we don't know, I think we're jumping ahead too quickly in lieu of the budget and the lack of, of funds from the state. I, I just, it's, it's, this part is hard for me to wrap my head around.
Sure, and I've thought about that. Actually, I, I was going between the Director position and something like a coordinator, an educational coordinator, and yet, my challenge was, my understanding from the Board is they, you all, don't want me working in this work, but to hand it off to another person. And also from the Strategic Planning Committee that some of you may have been on, the importance they felt to have one person dedicated to doing this, because we've seen the potential to be really great, but there needs to be time to develop it. So it's like this, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And so, given those things, what I think I, or thought I was hearing from the Board is, we want to take this opportunity to see what we can do. And so, I kept it as a Director position as a result of that. If the Board says to be, no Karen, you stick with it, you be the lead on this, and we'll hire somebody underneath you, I'm open to that too, and then, then the two of us will see what we can do.
Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I guess the only comment I want to make on that is that there's so much emotion on international students, both pro and con. And the one advantage of, and it's a semantics here, of having the position higher up is, it's going to give visibility to the program, and we're going to have regular reports, and it's going to address all the feelings in the community, both pro and con. So, I mean, you don't want to have that position too far down, because, you know, and it's not going to cost you any more money. So, to me, it's a semantics question, what you call it, but I think it's good to have it highly visible so the community can watch and react accordingly. Just a side comment.
Any other comments or questions?
Dumpty dumpty.
Well, maybe it is a little, you know, on the semantics level, but I, I think that it can grow with the program. I think if you, if you put somebody in too high of a position right away, people are going to continue with the feeling of it just, you know, being rammed in and not, not a lot of thought. I think, I think somebody to lower position, we can always revisit, you know, changing that position when this, you know, turns into a ball of fire. You know, I, I, I think we should start small and grow.
Dr. Schulte?
I'll just remind you, part of the issue, I think for some people, not all, is the fact that I am traveling. And so, again, to remove me from being the center of the position and putting somebody else in there that can do the, the work of traveling and connecting in with these countries around the world. So I think, I mean, that's the rationale at least in the past of how we got to this spot.
Do I have a motion to move this to the full Board, the entire package, for consideration?
I thought we had. Did we do that already?
I don't, no, I don't think I got to. Did I get to that? Did I do that already?
No motion.
I did not, yeah.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, all right.
Can I add one other thing?
Sure.
One thing too, when it, so if it goes to the Board tomorrow, you can pull part of it out too. So you can move part of it, all of it, do amendments.
Yeah, you can make, I was just going to tell you that, you can make amendments to it tomorrow, but, but it has to be decided by the full Board.
Right.
And so.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, we do need to move on, on this. However the position ends up looking, if we wanted to get somewhere with international and meet our goals for, for this coming year, it would be really helpful to have a person, regardless of what their status is.
Yeah. Okay, so all in favor of moving it to the full Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No nays.
No.
Oh, do we have a nay?
Oh, absolutely. I'm still, I'm going with watering down Dr. Cargill's position. Now, I may be fickle and change my vote tomorrow, but I want to read the materials first and then I'll decide tomorrow.
All right, I shouldn't have jumped to that assumption there. So, three to one. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the presentation of a plan to increase graduation rates. Dr. Carr.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. This is my last presentation. To be able to present the plan to increase graduation rates in the School District of Janesville. I've worked with the high school principals, including the Charter School Coordinator, Lisa Peterson, to, to look at our graduation rates in the School District of Janesville. And so, as a team, we have created a plan in which you received the memo this afternoon from Deb Blazer. And in that plan, it includes, from a district perspective, as well as the plan from each of our high schools. And I'll go through that this evening with you. And so, yes, we have seen a decrease in the graduation rates from the twelve thirteen school year to the thirteen fourteen school year. But I must go on record in saying that is not a trend. We are not, that we have not seen a trend in declining graduation rates in the School District of Janesville. That's one point in time. And so, as a team, we wanted to make sure that we were proactively addressing the issue. And so, we met to decide, and what is the best plan of action to address graduation rates and make sure that we are paying as close of attention as Dr. Schulte, and of course, the Board of Education will want us to with graduation rates. And so, in your plan, I presented the issue and background information in relation to how the formulas are calculated, when our four, five, and six-year cohorts began with DPI, when they began reporting, like, in the four and five-year cohorts. And it started in 2019, and then five-year cohort in 2011, six-year cohort in year 1112. And so that's how the data over time has been reported. Initially, you received legacy graduation dates and just completion rates. But over time, the manner in which the rates have been reported has changed. And so, in the memo that was released in May, when the state scores were released for the thirteen fourteen. for the 13-14 school year, in the memo, you saw that I presented you two charts, and those are included in your packets on page two. The four-year cohort graduation rate in comparison to the state, and it includes the Jamesville rates, and then it breaks it down for each school, as well as the five- and six-year cohort rates. And so, please note on the first chart or table on page two, where you see for the 12-13 school year, the 12.2 percent, that was an error in reporting, and there should never have been a score, a percentage included for Rock River Charter School, as every student at Rock River Charter School receives a Craig or Parker diploma. And so, there was an error, and we were not able to correct that with DPI. However, I want to make note that that 12.2 percent percentage rate should not have been included there, and for that matter, could have skewed data for that school year. And then, as you look at the five- and six-year cohort rates, I definitely want to bring attention to that our five-year cohort rate continues to increase from the 10-11 school year to the 13-14 school year. And so, our students may not be earning a high school diploma... Not all of our students may not be earning a high school diploma in the four-year traditional math, but we are a district that prides ourselves on meeting the needs of students. And so, we meet the needs of students by any means necessary. And so, it may take them longer than four years. We're proud that they're graduating in five years. We're proud that they're graduating in six years. And so, we definitely want to highlight that in tonight's presentation, as well as within the district. And so, any of the interviews that I participated in, as well as Dr. Schulte, we're proud that students are graduating. We are happy that they're graduating. We're ecstatic if they're graduating in four years. We're still happy at five and six years. And so... Uh-oh, excuse me. And so, the plan, what is our plan to increase graduation rates in the School District of Jamesville? And so, we have a district perspective, and you see that on page three of your board memo. What will we do at the district level? And so, the first thing, as a district, that we have agreed as a team, of what we're going to do to truly analyze and look deep at those graduation rates, is to establish a graduation committee. Who's going to be part of this graduation committee? Of course, the building principals at the high school level, special education staff, our ELL coordinator, as well as youth advocates. We want to make sure that every group is represented when we are looking at this data. And so, that graduation committee, as proposed in this plan, will meet on a monthly basis. To do what? Discuss graduation progress within the School District of Jamesville and make sure that our students are on task for graduation. And that information then will be reported to Dr. Schulte, but then ultimately be reported to you as a board, giving you an update on what those findings are. And so, the first task that the graduation committee would work on is looking at, why aren't our students graduating in the four years? And what barriers are they facing that's preventing them to graduate in those four years? And so, as a team, the graduation committee will truly look at that data, bring information back to Dr. Schulte, as well as to the Board of Education during the... At the end of the first semester of the 15-16 school year. And so, the committee needs time to work together and truly analyze that data. What are we doing in the district, and what can we better improve in the district to further improve and increase our graduation rates? In addition to the... From the district standpoint, our Dr. Smiley is working with Infinite Campus to implement a feature within Infinite Campus called the Multi-Year Graduation Planner, where students and parents will be able to look at their graduation progress through the Infinite Campus system and tell where they are as a student. So, families will always know, "Where is my child?" in relation to meeting graduation requirements. So, he's still working on that. And so, as a district, we see that that feature can be implemented during the 16-17 school year. So, they're still working on it, and then he will also bring it further to Dr. Schulte when that feature has been fully implemented for use in the School District of Jamesville. So, that's the district's perspective. In the plan, you also see by each school, a plan at the building level, because we know not one plan is going to work for every school. Each of our students are different. Each school is different. So, each building leader, while we met as a group, determined the needs based on the students within their building that are going to address and what's going to help address and improve those graduation rates. And so, each building leader worked with their administrative team and their staff to develop a plan that you will see in the board memo. Some of the interventions are things that have been used before, and so, we're not saying they're brand new. However, we're saying we are enhancing them, and we're going to pay closer attention to those items. So, of course, district-wide, there are network meetings taking place, but they're going to pay greater attention to graduation rates and making sure that the conversation is taking place specifically in relation to where students are in their progress of meeting graduation requirements. And so, as a district, this summarizes the plan to increase graduation rates. And the big idea here is increased collaboration and continuing the conversation and making sure that we're very deliberate in our efforts to make sure that we're addressing the needs and paying attention to that and having a conversation on a frequent basis and not losing that focus. Not to say that we have, but making sure that we're putting greater emphasis on monitoring graduation rates and progress of our students in the School District of Jamesville. And at this point, I'll open for questions.
Commissioner Thompson?
I haven't had the pleasure of seeing the memo if it came today. So, I may only... But I love the report, the verbal report, and it sounds great, and I'll support it. The only comment I have, which may or may not be appropriate, is when we set up the committee, you know, whatever, I would like to make sure JEA has a representative on it. And that's my only comment. But the report was not...
I gave you my special report. Thank you.
One less thing you need to pack.
Or burn.
Or burn.
That's the bonfire.
I have a question. Okay, so I'm looking at this, and it says that students who are identified deficient, right, or as potential, they will be encouraged to go into different programs depending on the school. And I'm just wondering, how... We have RTI. How's that factor in here? Don't we... We use an RTI approach for kids that are... Might be struggling. How does that... How's that factor into the plan, or does it factor into the plan?
It aligns with the plan, and so, the response to intervention is looking at the needs of the child and creating a plan of intervention to meet the needs of that student. And so, that's exactly what we're explaining in the memo, is looking at the needs for the students through the net... Through a network meeting or collaborative team effort to establish what's the best plan of action for the student. And RTI is exactly that, putting a plan in place to meet the needs of the student.
Okay, thanks. And you're... When they meet with them, they, like I said, they move them into a school within a school program or the block program, depending on... And then, Rock River Charter School as soon as possible.
If that's the best placement for the student, but truly seeing what the needs of the student is. So, school within a school is a program with... Within a charter... I mean, I'm sorry, Craig, and then Block is Parker. And if those programs are through analysis of what the student needs, if those programs will not meet the student's needs, then there's a referral to Rock River Charter School, because we have five different programs at Rock River Charter School that can also meet the needs of students.
Okay. And what do we do if the student refuses all of that?
Keep working and keep suggesting, keep meeting with the student, calling the family and providing those options. You don't stop, you keep going.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay, thank you, Dr. Carla. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the resolution. I'd like to see about approval for... To move it to the full board for discussion tomorrow night. This is a resolution that... About teacher licensure, and it's in your packet. And this was developed from a model provided by WASBA on the subject. And it is... There are a lot of things that I'd like to write resolutions about, lots of things, but this is...
Could be here for months and hours.
It could be forever. But this one is really important, at least to me, and I know it is to the administration here as well. And so, what I'm asking for is a motion to move it to the full board and then... And a second, and then we can discuss it.
It is vehemently moved.
Moved and vehemently seconded?
Can I third it?
Thirded? Okay. Wow, that's right. Then, okay, so, does anybody have any questions or comments? Dr. Sperry?
I don't know if this should be stated or in this resolution or not, but we currently have our own standards of hiring.
Sure.
We already have flexibility, and I think that we want to maintain what we currently have. So, if that needs to be stated elsewhere, more specific in here, but I'm not sure I'm understanding the whole... I mean, I understand what you have here, and thank you for putting this together, but...
Yeah, we do have... I think this is more of a statement of what we think is... It's like this, we know is true, and this is what needs to have... We need to have and what we expect out of people that apply here. And, you know, in my mind, that's what it is, is a statement of what we regard as a standard and to ask the Joint Finance Committee to really think about this and consider the impact this will have on the education of children. That's my... Those are my thoughts about it. Any other comments?
Well, I know we discussed this topic before, and didn't we take something to the board officially? Because I remember you were at the meeting, the ledge committee meeting, and there was a resolution by our state organization, and we expressed a lot of concern when that was being proposed lowering the standards. So, I thought, I'm not against the resolution and reaffirming it, but I thought we had taken that whole packet before we had the state conference and said, "Don't do this." So, I... It's just a question of...
It was the review of the proposals that were going to WASBA, and you were reviewing it for the delegate, and which way did you want him or her to vote?
But it wasn't a resolution on our part.
No.
All right, well, I just wanted to...
It was WASBA.
I mean, it will be good to remind the other board members that we've already said no to this.
Right.
Thank you.
And this is... This goes on to our representatives and the people on the Joint Finance Committee stating our view on this. Any other comments?
I'm in full support.
Okay. Okay, so, seeing no more discussion, can I have in... All those who... I don't know why I have such a hard time saying this, but all those in favor of moving this to the full board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I better check. Okay, no opposed. Okay, great. Any announcements and updates? Dr. Schulte?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, yesterday, our students attended the Tommy Awards at the Overture Center, and they are always recognized, but there was a special recognition yesterday, and that was our teacher, Jan Knutson, Parker High School teacher, got a lifetime achievement award, one of very few that have ever been given out. So, that was a special occasion and a surprise to her. We all kept it a secret, so that's always good. On Wednesday, we have a special board workshop that will be led by the insurance consultants, one of them, David Croct, on spousal surcharge and why they are recommending that particular surcharge. So, that will start at 5:30 on Wednesday. Luncheon for Dr. Cargile and Dr. Cale and others on... Did you have a question about that?
No, I just hadn't heard that bit about Wednesday.
It's probably on your voicemail somewhere, correct? Yeah, you were given a call today, so... Luncheon on Wednesday at noon. Is that when it's starting? Do we know?
11:45.
11:45 is good. Commissioner Huth is cooking. He's grilling. You'll smell it from the courthouse.
Yes. My ears don't work with this. This is great.
So, please come if you're around. We'd love to have you, and we're going to celebrate your new jobs, but cry that you're leaving us, because you will be missed. We also have, and I think I mentioned this before, 10 students coming from Guadalajara, Mexico, to spend time with our students in a 21st century learning class. They're high school students, six young men, four young women. If you'd like to host, please let me know. They'll be here for about 10 days. And then, finally, I'm just forecasting what will be to come, and if you'll look behind Commissioner Thompson, at our 14-15 goals, we are struggling with our quality goal because the test has been changed, as you know, and the whole accountability, record-keeping now is not going to be utilized as we originally thought when we set those goals. So, I've been talking to Dr. Earhart about, is there a better measure? The test was changed from the WKCE test to the Smarter Balance test, and then we ended up with what, Badger? Badger Balance or something? So, we were ill-prepared for whatever that test was to bring. We may have scored well or not. We have no idea, but to use that as a comparison, we're really questioning if that is the best measure. So, anyway, it'll come back again, but I just wanted to let you know that's a conversation we all are having, having with our principals as well, because the principals have a LAM, as I do, and that is our evaluation tool, and is that a fair measure for them? So, it'll come... That discussion will come back again.
Thank you very much. Future agenda items. Obviously, we have the just cause thing coming back in July, the policy about global education, the Global Education Certificate coming back in July. And I had a couple of other things on my list that... Let's see here. We're going to discuss weighted grades and the AP results in July, and the early school intervention. Is that... I don't remember what that is.
That is not necessarily July. That is something Dr. Kelly is going to talk to Commissioner Thompson about. I think that's yours. That was originally your concern and question about how we're addressing our more severe kids and early intervention processes.
I see now. That's actually September, I guess. I misread my notes.
But there is some planning that's going to go on before then.
And then, a policy about televising community meetings or to the community, our meetings, our committee meetings that we're going to discuss in July, or... I'm sorry, or August or September. So, at some point, but just, it's not...
I suggested the file, because then we'll be through the budget and filling out positions, all the staff positions that you filed.
So, we don't... So, we have about four things, I think I count, right?
When is the committee meeting in July?
We are going to talk about that right now.
Okay, let me make sure I have everything that we've just discussed. As far as televising committee meetings, that's typically the chair tells me yea or nay.
Okay.
So, it could be that simple.
Okay.
If we like it.
I like that idea.
Okay, so, make sure.
I approve.
It's typically the chair that tells me if they would like the meeting televised or not.
I'm suggesting that the board itself...
Adopt an overall policy.
Overall, that all committee meetings will be televised.
Yes.
We explore that option, look at the cost, and that that be a full board policy. I was the one that lit the fire originally to get the board televised meetings.
Oh, way back when?
Way back, yes, in 1830.
I didn't say it, you did.
Anyway, no, I'm pushing for not the chair's discretion.
Okay. Commissioner...
Let's see what the costs are. Let's see what's involved, and then decide whether or not all committees being televised for board members, for the public, for staff, whatever, because there's a lot of things I'd like to watch, but I don't want to go to every meeting.
Yeah, but you're talking about bringing that up in September, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I want to... I did not have that part in my notes.
I'm being nice to staff for change.
That's great.
I'm going to note that.
Okay, so, I...
All right, I got that.
So, I have the weighted grade discussion.
And that's July.
Uh-huh, and the AP results in July, just cause...
And you said you wanted that to go to a vote.
Yes, and then the written policy about the Global Ed Certificate.
Yep.
And I don't think I... Are there any other things? Or is there anything we're forgetting?
Who does disposal surcharge?
Oh, that's not us.
Okay, good.
That's... That would be benefits.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Now, I hate to be a stinker here, but I don't want to just meet with...
But you just would nice a minute ago.
Well, Dr. Kelly left, so now we can talk. It was not my intent to just meet with Dr. Kelly. I felt that the board itself, and Kim knew where it was coming from, needed with our expulsions and all the other stuff that's going on, I felt this committee needed to get a report on, is there something we need to do? Do we need to realign staff as money permits? Do we need to realign staff as money permits in the future? What can we do to be more proactive rather than wait till they get to middle school and we're kicking them out? And so, that was meant to be this board's report, which may or may not go onto the full board.
Okay.
I don't want to, no disrespect. I don't want to just sit down with Dr. Kelly. I wanted the staff to bring us, hey, this is where we're at. And things are getting worse with the kids. They're not getting better. And look at the resources we're putting in. And I'm just asking, it's, we look at this preventative-wise. I recognize it may be a couple of years, we need to add staff or whatever. But no, so that, let me clarify.
Okay. And these are, these are some preliminary steps that we're looking at taking as we gather information to bring to all of you. We thought you might have some particular interest. So if, you can see with what she's gonna say.
I really have no agenda here. I have no thoughts in mind. But I thought if we could have this fall, then we could look at the reality implications for next year's budget.
All right, I'll share that with her.
I mean, I can meet with Dr. Kelly. She's the sweet lady.
See what she has to say. But in the meantime, we'll continue to gather information for September.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody, any other things you want to discuss next time?
There's plenty.
Then let's talk about next time. Looking at the calendar, if we went in about a month, it probably helps to keep these pretty much on the same day, doesn't it?
Yes.
And, and is, I mean, is that okay with you guys? So we know that, you know, like Mondays are Monday, are days?
They were Tuesdays.
I know that, well, actually, that was, that, that was a, that was a fluke. That was a change. They have been Mondays before. I'm looking at the 6th, July 6th.
Yes.
Does that work for, for everybody, July 6th?
That's a Monday?
Yes.
Correct.
No, that's Fourth of July weekend.
No, it's a Monday. We're back.
Well, you may be back, but I'll be ignored.
Okay.
And number two, I thought that's about when all you people try and sneak away on vacation.
At towards the end of the month.
Yeah.
Yes.
They don't get the whole month off.
Yes. However, I, I feel...
Tuesday instead of Monday?
Tuesday the 7th. Tuesday the 7th works.
I'm not sure I'm here.